Good evening. I would like to call our Council's Committee of the Whole meeting for March 21st to order. At this time, we're going to do our moment of silence. You know, we've had a lot of great things happen in our community. We had a great session last night, which we'll probably talk about a little bit more, about the opportunities we have along the riverfront. We know as a city, we have work to do, but we have a lot to celebrate. And I think that's important, that we keep that in mind with all of us as we come together. We have challenges and we have opportunities. And be mindful of that keeps us moving forward, thinking of the half-full glass that our city creates for us, and staying focused on that. With that, a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Alderman Dickman, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance? Thank you, Alderman Dickman. Jackie, would you please call the roll?
Ambrose.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Rossen.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Mattson.
Gripp.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Clul.
Here.
Tompkins.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Nine present, your honor.
Thank you very much, Jackie. Again, I want to wish you a good evening, and as we begin this meeting of the City Council, I would again like to welcome all those in attendance, and also those who are viewing the meeting on television or on the Internet. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, and please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region by way of our TV broadcast. We are happy that you're participating in your city government, and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share, to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens. For the children, adults, seniors, and families in our community, those in attendance and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us and being part of this process. At this time, we ask that you turn off or silence your cellphones and other electronic handheld devices, as they can be disruptive and interfere with the audio system here in the chambers. As part of the Committee of the Whole tonight, if you wish to address the council on a specific item that appears on a committee agenda, you are encouraged to do so during that standing committee. You will also have an opportunity to address the City Council under public with business portion of the meeting, which will occur towards the end. When addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself or the committee chair, and speak to the council as a body, and not to any single member. We ask that you limit your remarks to no more than five minutes, and I know that you all will, but I ask that you observe our commonly-accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. So with that, again, thank you all for being here. Again, our city administrator is on vacation this week, and just as a note, Alderman Mattson is in China on a delegation with our Sister City program, so they're not here this evening. So on that, our Assistant City Administrator and Finance Director, Brandon Wright, anything this evening?
Nothing this evening, your honor.
That was a great lead-in to that, "nothing this evening," so that was great. Thank you. We have some public hearings this evening, first, under Community Development, and Alderman Gripp will lead that discussion.
Thank you, your honor. As you said, we have two public hearings. The first public hearing is, I'll open the public hearing for the ordinance for case number REZ-18-01, being the request of Tom Swanwick, DBA Forest View LLC, for a rezoning on 1.19 acres of property known as Lot 3 of Ride High, 2nd Edition, located on the south side of East 46th Street between Grand and Tremont Avenues. The rezoning is from C2 General Commercial District to R6M Planned Unit Development to construct attached townhouses on individual lots. Ten units are proposed. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second, all in favor? All opposed, same sign? This public hearing is closed. Public hearing number two is a public hearing on the recommendation for year 44, July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019, Community Development Block Grant Funds. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? Please come to the lectern, state your name and address or ward, please.
Good evening. I'm Jim Hepner. I'm from the 1st Ward, and I'm a member of the Citizens Advisory Committee, or the CAC. As a reminder to everyone, the CAC members are appointed by the mayor and the council. Among the tasks of the CAC is the oversight of Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG funds, and the application process. Each year, the CDBG and the Home Programs help thousands of Davenport residents by providing decent, safe, and affordable housing, neighborhood infrastructure improvements, small business loans, and services to children, families, the homeless, abuse survivors, and those with mental illness. The task of scoring applications and recommending grant amounts has grown more difficult each year, as federal funding seems to be consistently reduced. The CDBG grant has declined by 45% from its highest-funded year, and the Home Program has been reduced by more than 50%. This year, as usual, funding requests exceed the amount of funds that are estimated to be available. In the federally capped category of public services, a shortfall of 12% to 15% is projected. Very briefly, I'll discuss the process that's used to apply for these CDBG funds. There's a workshop that's led by city staff for all applicants to review applications and ask any questions that they might have, and how to complete the forms and the applicable federal regulations that apply. The CAC reviews each application and holds a work session where applications are discussed. Following the work sessions, questions or requests for additional information are sent to the applicants, with responses provided prior to the applicant's presentations. At a public meeting, each applicant presents their request in person to the CAC, where there is again opportunity for questions and clarification. Following the presentations, each CAC member evaluates each application based on previously-approved criteria. The CAC met earlier this month to vote on funding recommendations. The CAC used the same process that was used last year, and in several previous years, making recommendations based on a formula that ties the points earned in the evaluation process to the dollars that are available. It's a very challenging process, with funds being reduced constantly, and the needs of the agencies continue to rise. The CAC is requesting that the council accept the CAC recommendations as presented for the upcoming year, recognizing the time, the effort, and commitment that has been invested in the process of reviewing and scoring each application. And with that, I want to add as a personal note that it's been a pleasure and an honor to serve on this committee, and I'm very appreciative of the chance to do it. Are there any questions?
So this is the public hearing, so we won't dialogue. It'll come up again on the Community Planning Agenda here in just a few minutes, and then at that time, if any of the Aldermen have any questions, we can do that then. But thank you for the report, it was very good. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one else, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second, all in favor? All opposed, same sign? This public hearing is now closed, and that concludes Community Development. Back to you, your honor.
Thank you very much, Alderman Gripp. Now Alderman Ambrose will lead our public hearings related to the Public Works, a part of our discussion this evening.
Thank you, honor. I open a public hearing on the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the 2018 General Street Resurfacing Program. Anybody from the public?
Yes, I'm Joseph Schron, I live at 4th Ward. I agree with Ambrose, let's find out what the estimate of the streets, and from Harrison, oh, with the Gaines Street, there's no potholes, you could lose a car in it. That's all I got to say, thank you.
Thanks. They're working hard on getting those potholes filled. Anybody else? There's a motion to close this public hearing. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Number two is a public hearing on the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated costs for the 200 block of Brady Street Escape Improvement Project. Anybody from the public? Hearing and seeing no one, your honor, I move to close this public hearing. All in favor? The last is number three, public hearing on the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Main Street Sewer, the Main Street Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project. Anybody from the public? Hearing and seeing no one, your honor, I move to close this public hearing. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you, your honor.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. We have one presentation this evening. Our chief, Jim Morris, is going to come up and talk about Sound the Alarm Program. You know, the amount of people that can be saved through this, and I've asked Chief Morris to come up and present that, we are a leader in this area, and a short presentation, if you would, please, chief.
Thank you. Jim Morris, Fire Marshal. I just want to update the council on this Sound the Alarm initiative. This initiative is a push with the Red Cross and local fire departments to reduce home fire-related dust by 25%, and locally, goal of providing 700 smoke detectors quad-citywide, just not in Davenport. This telethon is going to be hosted by WQAD and the Red Cross on Wednesday, March 28th, at some point at which you can call in and request a free smoke detector, which will be installed on Saturday, April 28th, by volunteers from Red Cross and local fire departments. With that being said, when I first took this position on, I kind of experienced a little bit of a tragedy. We had a significant life lost, four children and a female mother, in a mobile home fire, and I think part of that was due to the fact that they did not have any working smoke detectors. So part of my short-term goal with taking this position as a fire marshal was to really get awareness out to the fact that we do need smoke detectors, they will save lives, they will help people get out. Being part of the Quad City Fire Marshals, I approached that group and asked them if we could do a Quad City push to get this word out, so we can make sure that everybody has a working smoke detector. Doing so, we came up with a public service announcement that we're hopefully going to be able to air on our local city website, as well as mainstream media. So I'll show you that, and then answer any questions afterwards. Before I show you, I do have to thank Pat Driscoll, Kurt Allmeyer, and Jennifer Nara. They did an awesome job helping us kind of refine all 400 of our ideas that we had, and then getting a good turnaround, so thank you to them. Oh, I hope it's bigger than that. Every second counts when a fire starts.
That's why proper notification is so important.
Smoke alarms can save lives.
Call us to protect your property.
Call us to help protect your loved ones.
Quad City Fire Marshals want you and your family to be safe. Please contact your local fire department about our free smoke detector program.
Well done. Thank you. Thank you, Chief Morris. Are there any petitions or communications from your council members this evening? Alderman Tompkins.
Thank you. I just wanted to share that I have a ward meeting coming up this Monday, 6:30, at the Eastern Avenue Library, and I have staff will be presenting a residential development opportunity, proposal off of Northwest Boulevard in Davenport, obviously. And then also, I have Police Department will be presenting on personal safety and home safety tips for this upcoming summer. Thanks, hope to see you there.
Thank you, Alderman Tompkins. We have Alderman Dickman.
Thank you, your honor. It's spring break week in the Davenport schools, and believe it or not, summer will be here before we know it, so I wanted to make sure everyone who has young ones knows that there's summer programs that are available through our Parks Department, so make sure to keep an eye out for those. And the registration for some of the summer programming does fill up fast, so make sure to keep an eye on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Dickman, Alderman Clul.
Thank you. The second 6th Ward meeting of the year is going to be held on the 26th, at 6:00 PM, at the Unitarian Universalist Congregation of the Quad Cities, otherwise known as the Unitarian Church, at 3707 Eastern Avenue. Topic for this month is going to be the riverfront. Riverfront development, Main Street landing, also some of the discussion that was held last night, led by RDG at the Figgy Art Museum. Going to have Zach Peterson there, Public Works Landscape Design Architect, helping to lead a discussion and do a presentation, so it should be a very interesting ward meeting indeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Clul. Alderman Rossen.
Thank you, your honor. Just wanted to say that the Carlo delegation that came over from Ireland through our Sister Cities Program was here for eight days. They all finally boarded a plane today, in fact, this afternoon. The rest of them left. They had, what they told us, they had a spectacular time. Their itinerary was packed for the full eight days. Many of you met them and had a chance to interact with them, and they wanted me to pass along that they found Davenport, the city of Davenport and the citizens, to be very warm and welcoming, and they look forward to coming back. So thank you for hosting our Sister City delegation, they had a wonderful time. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Rossen, and just wanted to share, thank you. You were instrumental in that whole process, and can't thank you enough. And I got a chance to meet them on a number of occasions, and they're really delightful people, and there's a lot of things they're looking to exchange. I think this will be beneficial to both cities, so thank you, Alderman Rossen. Alderman Ambrose, please.
Thank you, honor. You know, spring is here now, the snow's gone, and I asking all the neighbors to take some time and walk around their neighborhood and pick up some of the debris left after the snow in the winter, and if they see potholes, or if they have nuisance properties that they're challenging their neighborhood, please call or contact City Hall or Public Works, and we can get those addressed. But let's keep Davenport, America's cleanest city. And the last item is 605 Main Street. It's the 7th Judicial District's Halfway House Prison, and there's always been an issue with prisoners walking away from that, but last week, one walked away, and our police officers had to respond to a shooting in the neighborhood, it was the Halfway House escapee. And I asked our city attorney, you know, they can't take care of their prisoners and our obligations to our great city, you know, let's start a nuisance abatement and see if we can get them out of our community. It's difficult for the neighbors, you know, when these people escape, you know, they cause a lot of fear in the neighborhoods, so... They came to our community, they asked us to build that, and it's gotten worse and worse, you know, they're failing our community, so to me, it's a nuisance, and I can't speak for the other Aldermen, but, you know, when we have nuisances in our community, you know, we got to abate them, so, you know. Tom, why don't you follow up and contact the leaders in the 7th Judicial District and see what you can do? Thanks.
I would suggest, I know that's very important to all of us, we're all concerned with that, and I think it's something we probably, as a group, want to talk about how we can work with that in more detail, so we'll all, as a group, kind of figure out a way to work with you, Tom, and convey that important message. Anybody else? I think, Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, your honor. I just neglected a few weeks ago to do this, but I wanted to thank Public Works, particularly Rich Oswald. We had in the 3rd Ward, we had a house that had been an issue for 20 years. We met with Rich and his staff, and also the Davenport Police Department. Everybody was aware of the situation, but we just had not been able to move on it, and he was able to do that. The next, after the meeting, he was able to go, and the house is now closed, and will probably not be reoccupied, and it's a great relief to the neighbors, and I just want to thank him for that. It was wonderful.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to note, the first riverfront arts collaboration between Downtown Davenport Association, the Riverfront Improvement Commission, the Figgy, and the city, was held last night at the Figgy, and I saw Alderman McGinnis and Alderman Clul, and Alderman Gripp there as well. I'm not sure if anybody else was there last night. It was a big crowd, it was probably 100-plus, 120 people there last night, a lot of interest in that, so there's some excitement happening with that as we move forward, so I think that's pretty exciting as well. So with that, we're going to move on to action items for discussion, and we're going... Oh, and do you have anything, Alderman Dickman? You had your comment? Good. Action items, the first area to be discussed is Community Development, and Alderman Gripp will lead that discussion. Alderman Clul will set the agenda.
Thank you, your honor. We have six items on the Community Development Agenda this evening. I'll start with item number one, a third consideration, ordinance for case REZ-17-08, being the request of Palmer College of Chiropractic to rezonate 37.63 acres, more or less, of property generally located between Harrison Street and Pershing Avenue, and between East 12th and 5th Streets, from R4 Moderate Density Dwelling District, R6M High Density Dwelling District, C1 Neighborhood Commercial District, C2 General Commercial District, C4 Central Business District, and M1 Light Industrial District, to PID Planned Institutional District. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Is there anyone from the council? Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to make one point, this is point of business. Mr. Gravert, who owns the auto dealership down on Harrison, I think was here last week, and he is, you know, very excited about what's happening with Palmer, but he continues to be concerned about the potential closure of the alley. And he was not able to be here tonight, and I did talk to him. If staff would call him, please, he's in his busy season, and I know everybody's busy, but he talked about, you know, the alley's going to be open from 6 up, but he will not be able to operate his business if that alley eventually is closed all the way from 8. He needs some way to, for vehicles to drive in and back out, whether it's an L shape, or land above, or whatever. And he understands that this PID does not include the closure, but it is part of the plan coming up, and he wanted to get that on the record. So could someone, please, from staff, give him a call by the end of this week perhaps, and see if they can catch him and get his question resolved? I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I think this is a great project, and I want to thank Palmer for committing to do a Planned Institutional District in that area. It really improves the communication with the neighbors. There have been some concerns, but, you know, I think we can easily reassure everybody that these concerns will be addressed as a project moves forward. Thanks.
All right. Seeing no other comments from the council, this item will move on. Item number two is a first consideration, ordinance for case number REZ-18-01, being the request of Tom Swanwick, DBA Forest View LLC, for a rezoning on 1.19 acres of property known as Lot 3 of Ride High, 2nd Edition, located on the south side of East 46th Street between Grand and Tremont Avenues. The rezoning is from C2 General Commercial District to R6 Planned Unit Development to construct attached townhouses on individual lots. Ten units are proposed. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing no one, is there anyone from council? This item will move on. Item number three is a resolution approving case number Final Platte F-17-14, Falcon Point, 1st Edition, being a replat of Lot 3 of Eagles Crest, 1st Edition, located south of West Locust Street and west of Emerald Drive, containing 39 residential lots and one outlot on 22.16 acres, more or less. Detention is on a separate outlot south of the platte on 3.39 acres, more or less. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Alderwoman Dickman.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to note that I think this is really great to see development happening in this area. I know that some of the schools have been having a challenge with new attendance, and so this is a great direction to see building, construction happening.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution to set a public hearing on the proposed conveyance of the following property, the south 102.02 feet of Lot 2, Interstate 80 Airport Industrial Park, 6th Edition, to the petitioner, Deere &amp; Company. Can we have someone from staff come up and just walk the public through what this is, please?
Bruce Berger, Community Planning and Economic Development Director. This is part of some of the rail improvements that are proposed up in the industrial park area, in the Eastern Iowa Industrial Center, and so there's basically a three-party land swap that's coming, and this is the first step, setting the public hearing. So there's a portion of land that the GDRC, the Greater Davenport Redevelopment Corporation, will be conveying to the city. City will accept that and convey to Deere, and return Deere's conveying some land south of the transload that will allow a rail, in addition to the rail spur.
Thank you, Bruce. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? I'd just like to say thank you to Bruce and your staff, and the mayor. I know this has been a complicated thing to work through, and it looks like we're getting to a resolution, and hopefully we'll be ready for Sterilite when they're ready to open. I'll let the mayor talk.
Just very quickly, I wanted to again thank our Community Planning and Economic Development team. I've had a chance to work with them quite a bit lately, and as you can see by this nature of what was just explained, pretty complicated, but a lot of people working hard, really knowing their business, so thank you very much for all of your efforts with Suzanne, and Sarah, and Laura, the whole team, and yourself, Bruce. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other comment, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution setting a public hearing concerning the proposed conveyance of vacated public right-of-way, that being part of East 10th Street, lying north of the sidewalk at 1002 Bridge Avenue. Juan Goita is the petitioner. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Our final item this evening is a motion approving the allocations for year 44, the Community Development Block Grant Funds and Home Investment Partnership Funds. Is there any questions from the council, from Mr. Hepner, who's gave that nice presentation and has stuck around? Alderman Ambrose.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank everybody that serves on the board, they do a great job, and, you know, it gets to be challenging at times, and I appreciate it, and I'm sure all my fellow Aldermen do. Thanks, Jim.
Yeah, and I would just add a comment. Thank you, Mr. Hepner, for all the work that you've done, and that your group continues to do, and then I would just shed some light on CDBG Week that's coming up, and the tour, and I think this will be my third or fourth one, but it's really cool, because when you approve these things, and, you know, you see the addresses, and you read the little paragraph, but then once a year, they get us together and put us on a bus, and we tour all of the projects that this money was used for, and some of them are really cool, and small incremental things, not huge sweeping changes, but good things that are happening with that money, and nice job to our staff on that, so... Seeing no one else, this item will move on, and I will let Alderman Clul set the agenda.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. I move that item number one move forward to the discussion agenda, items 2 through 6 to the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor? All opposed? That concludes Community Development this evening.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp and Alderman Clul. Our next area to be discussed is public safety. Alderman Rossen will lead that discussion, and Alderman Condon will set the agenda.
Thank you, your honor. There's four sections, so I'll read each section in its entirety, and then ask for a public comment. They're not very long, for some reason, this time around. So, resolution closing various streets, lanes, or public grounds on the listed dates to hold outdoor events. Davenport Schools, high school and intermediate track meets, April 3rd, 5th, 12th, 16th, 3:45 PM to 6:00 PM. Closure location is 36th Street between Brady and Davenport Avenue. And the second item in this section is Quad City Bicycle Club, Quick Star Criterion, May 28th, 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Closure location, Mound Street from 11th to 12th Street, 11th Street from Mound Street to Hillcrest Avenue, Hillcrest Avenue to Fulton Avenue, Fulton Avenue from Hillcrest to Mound Street. Anyone from the public would like to comment on either one of those items? Anyone from council? Hearing and seeing no one, those two items will move on. Second is motion approving noise variance requests for various events on the listed dates, so we have two items in this section. St. Ambrose University, 418 West Locust, final weekend in April, April 27th, 7:00 PM to April... 7:00 PM to April 28th to 12:30 AM, and April 28th, 8:00 AM to midnight, outdoor music at Rogowski Center. twenty eighth, eight AM to midnight, outdoor music at Rogowski Center, over fifty DBA. And the John F. Kennedy Catholic School, forty-four hundred West Central Park Avenue, OLV JF Gala, May fifth, noon to eleven thirty PM, outdoor music, also over fifty DBA. Anyone from the public would like to comment on either item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, those will move on. The next section, motion approving beer and liquor license applications, new ones, Great River Brewery, three twenty-two and three thirty-two, East Second Street, outdoor area ownership update. Aldi Incorporated, seventeen oh two Brady Street, Midtown Plaza, premise update, license type C. QC Mart, sixty-eight oh seven Northwest Boulevard, new license, type C for beer, and annual license renewals are listed there. There's just one for Great River Brewery. Anyone from the public would like to comment on any of those items? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, that section will move on. And the last one is actually a motion for approving the petition for a streetlight at the intersection of Rockingham Road and Ricker Hill Road. And from the background information, it was approved by staff. Traffic engineering recommends installing a new streetlight pole at the intersection of Rockingham Road so I'd entertain.
It'll move.
And is there?
That gets voted on next week.
Oh, does it?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we will just move on, unless someone has a comment about that from public or council. Nope? All right. So that item will move on. I would ask Alderman Condon to go ahead and set the agenda.
Excuse me, I moved to place items one through four on the consent agenda.
There's been a motion and a second. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Same sign? And that concludes public safety.
Thank you, Alderman Rosson and Alderman Condon. Our third area to be discussed is Public Works, and Alderman Ambrose will lead that discussion, and Alderman Dunn will set the agenda.
Thank you, Honor. Hoping the discussion with the first item being a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Main Street Sanitary Sew Improvement Project. Anybody from the public? Council? Number two is resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the general street resurfacing program. Do we have someone from staff?
Can you give a little overview of the great plans?
Brian Shad Public Works, this is very similar to programs we've had in the past where we go through, mill up the existing asphalt, patch what's underneath, and any sorts of point repair, storm, sanitary, et cetera, replace curb where necessary, and then go back and overlay with asphalt. The areas that we are proposing are shown in red, West Locust from Division to Lincoln, Telegraph from Third to Clark, Marquette from Lombard to Central Park, and Marquette from Twenty Ninth to Thirty Eighth. What we've shown here in the blue is the plans that were approved last cycle for micro surfacing to show how everything dovetails together. So we are looking for favorable bids, and we'll propose a recommendation to council.
Brian, we had some challenges last year with dust. Have we figured out how we're going to address it in the future?
That dust was mainly through our micro surfacing program. We've addressed that in our specifications. We'll be working with the contractor as well.
And as you look back at last year's projects, how have they been holding up?
I think it's been very favorable. Our contractors have all been doing a very good job, and we look for that again this year.
All right. Anybody from public? Council? Number four is a resolution, number three is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the two hundred block of Brady Street Street Skate Improvement Projects. Anybody from the public? Council? Number four is resolution adopting the Iowa State Urban Design Standard for Public Improvements, the Iowa statewide urban standard specifications for public improvements in the City of Davenport supplemental specification manuals. Anybody from the public? Council? I'm going to read the next four, and then I'll ask for the public. Number five is resolution assessing the cost of building, of boarding up buildings at various lots and tracks of real estate. Number six is resolution assessing the cost of brush and debris removal at various lots and tracks of real estate. Number seven is resolution assessing the cost of sidewalk replacements at various lots and tracks of real estate. And number eight is resolution approving the specifications form of contract and estimated cost for the FY twenty nineteen sidewalk contract. Anybody from the public? Council? The last item is a motion amending the contract for the nuisance mowing twenty eighteen to L and L Lawn Maintenance LLC of Davenport, Iowa. This is a group that when we have nuisance properties and properties that have been neglected, they'll come out on behalf of the city and cut the grass and bill it to the owner. Public? Council? All right. Alderman Dunn, will you please set the agenda?
I move to place all items on consent, please.
All in favor? Second? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you, Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose and Alderman Dunn. Our last area to be discussed is finance, and Alderman Tompkins will lead that discussion, and Alderman McGinnis will set the agenda.
Thank you. We have five items to discuss tonight, and number one, I'm going to turn it over to the mayor so he can share some information.
Yes, a little bit of intro on this first one, then I'll turn it back over to Chairman Tompkins. The work plan, as it says here, is the city administrator's two thousand eighteen nineteen work plan. I think it's important to understand, for the public to understand, that this is the basically execution of our plan. And I think it's important to understand that the city administrator doesn't take off and do a plan. They basically, and Chi in this case, does a great job executing the plan that we all participate in developing and moving forward. So it's a partnership. We've reviewed all the details. We've seen this plan. But it's important that you're going to find out, as you hear some information in just a moment, you're going to find out that you get an understanding exactly what we're doing and when we're doing it. It's our plan that we heard and worked with you to develop, and now I'll turn it over to staff who came up with a really exciting execution ability to make sure that all comes together. So with that, I think we're going to turn it over to Mallory is going to do, and back to you first.
Thank you. I'm going to read number one first, and then I will turn it over. Such an exciting topic tonight. Everybody wants to jump in. Number one is a resolution adopting the city administrator's calendar year two thousand eighteen and calendar year two thousand nineteen work plan. Mallory? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mallory Mayor, Assistant to the City Administrator. As the mayor and Alderman Tompkins said, this agenda item that's before you tonight is the formal adoption of the city administrator's two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen work plan that we first shared in depth with you as part of the FY nineteen budget wrap-up work session. I think it's important to note from the very beginning that this work plan, just like the one in two thousand and seventeen, is focused on the six key operational pillars that were identified as part of the dashboard build-out. All the seventeen projects and those that are a part of the eighteen and nineteen plan are centered on five key outcome areas. I think that you'll see as we move through it that we're really investing in the talents and the strengths of our employees along the way. We're committed to collaborating cross-departmentally in a way that we never have before. We're innovating in how we share information, so it's important that not only are we sharing it, but that we're doing it in new and exciting ways and sharing it in a way that the public wants to receive it. Also, we're doing all of these projects within the adopted budget that you've given to staff and delivering on our goals. So the process and how we got here, one unique change to the work plan that's in front of you right now is that it's a two-year work plan. When we first introduced this concept in two thousand and seventeen, we did it as a one-year, but we found that many of the projects that are part of that work plan are so large in scope that they take two years to complete. For many of our infrastructure projects, they can cross two construction cycles. So that's really why we ended up with a two-year plan instead of a one. In November, the department head team met and started to identify the key projects in all of our departments that we were working on. We then sought input from the mayor and the council on what projects you wanted staff to work on in the coming years, and then you went through a prioritization matrix process and identified your key mayor council goals, and we worked from there. So the identified mayor council goals that you all decided on are crime reduction and juvenile support services, the commercial corridor revitalization studies, urban revitalization, improving infrastructure, a continued focus on Main Street Landing, and exploring the long-term community funding model for the Figgy and the Putnam. So a few highlights, and again, this plan that we shared with you, the full plan is in your packet and is on the website. I just pulled out a couple of highlights, and again, they're centered on the pillars. They all tie directly back to an operational performance pillar or directly to one of those six key goals that you have identified for us. And I think what you'll see on here is that we have many of those corridor revitalization studies here, the zoning code rewrite, many infrastructure projects, West Seventy Sixth Street continuing to push for the advancement of the I-80 widening project, the opening of the full Veterans Memorial Parkway project, the Fifty Third Reconstruction, moving Main Street Landing forward, which we have in our budget, and then the Miracle Field and Inclusive Play projects. So not only are we committed to advancing the projects that we say that we're going to do, but we want to share with you where we're at with those. We want to provide quarterly updates to you so that you know exactly where we're at and what progress has been made. On the city's website, we've incorporated all of this. You can access it directly from the main webpage under the city administrator's work plan icon. It's broken down into pillar area, and you can just click in there. It'll tell you who the project manager is and then what the current update is. So in terms of next steps, after this is formally adopted, I will roll out everything that is in there right now, which is from two thousand and seventeen, and load it with the new eighteen nineteen projects. We'll be wrapping up a quarter here soon, which is hard to believe, and I would say probably the second or third week of April, you will have first quarter updates. So that's the conclusion of the formal presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Mallory. Appreciate your work on that. Any comments or questions from the public? Any? Alderman Ambrose?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're, you look at all these great projects that we've done, you know, our city administrator has a standing team in Team Davenport, and, you know, those are the reasons why Davenport is the most transparent. We have the hardest-working team, and we're America's greatest city.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. This item will move on. Number two is a resolution approving six open prairie tax exemptions. Anyone from the public have any comments on this item? Anyone from council? This item will move on. Number three is a resolution awarding a contract for interior and exterior rehab of fourteen twelve West Fifteenth Street to River Valley Homes of Bettendorf, Iowa, in the amount of one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Alderman Dickman?
Bruce, do you mind just explaining for the public kind of the funding stream and reasons behind this project?
Bruce Berger, Community Planning and Economic Development. So this is part of the city's urban homestead program, and that's something we've done for, at least since the nineteen eighties, I know. We use CDBG funding, Community Development Block Grant funding, which is funding that comes directly to the city through HUD. It's federal, it does have affordability requirements and lots of other strings attached to it, and there's some timeliness standards. We generally do, and it's not necessarily every year, but we generally try to do a batch of three or so urban homesteads at a time. And you've seen in the past, we've done, in a couple of recent rounds, we've done some new construction. Most of that history of time since the eighties, we've done acquisition, rehab, sale, and that's what this is again. So this is a property that I believe was donated, and if we don't have to spend all that money, we won't, but there are a lot of federal requirements that go into it. And it's a complete gut rehab. Once we, if you approve this contract, River Valley Homes would then begin work on it. I'm not sure exactly of the timeline. Usually it's around this time next year, maybe, that we would have that property available, and it would be sold to a low to moderate income household.
Thank you very much.
Bruce, excuse me a minute, one more time. Just as, again, a clarification for all the public, this is not local tax dollars being spent on this. So it's a good clarification to understand this is federal dollars. Maybe just want to reiterate that point.
Right, right. It is. So this is HUD funding, which we get an allocation each year and has different requirements on how we can spend it, but if you don't spend it for those purposes within certain timelines, then you just don't get to use it in your community. So one of the things they allow you to spend it on is affordable housing. And so as a result, we've had some success with this program, putting a lot of homes that maybe were rental before back on the tax rolls, and it really doesn't come at a cost to the city.
Thank you. Alderman McGinnis?
I'm sorry, Bruce. Would you, can you talk a little bit? And I want to put you on the spot, because I know there are different funding goes at different levels, but what we're looking at in terms of affordable, what kind of family might be able to afford?
Yeah, sure, like the income breakdown.
Yeah.
So HUD requires you to look at incomes based on household size. And so, gosh, and I'm not exactly sure, I want to say a household size of four, a maximum income for this program is in the vicinity of fifty-five thousand, maybe? I may be off on that, but I think it's in that range. And if anybody out there has any questions on it, we can get you more detail. But basically, these are folks generally in the households that are, to be able to afford the housing payment, they do need to be generating income. It, a lot of times we'll say it's the starting teacher, it's the, you know, it's sometimes dual, dual incomes that are working in perhaps, you know, nine, ten dollar an hour jobs, that kind of thing, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, this item will move on. Number four, resolution awarding a contract for the Avea Phone System Upgrade to Morgan Burge and Associates of Chicago, Illinois, in an amount not to exceed four hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars. This is an item that staff is very excited about, so is, speak for myself. This is an upgrade that we desperately need, so this is exciting. Anyone from the public like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? This item will move on. And number five, I'm going to turn it over to the mayor, and before I read it, as he has a few words.
Yes, I think this is an example, a couple things, and we're going to reconvene the Blue Ribbon Panel, but this is one of the items that is an outgrowth of that. This is, we got the group together, committed to public safety, as we all were on the council. The group together, one of the recommendations was this operational study. The council came together, and we brought that together, and I won't get into the details. I know Mallory's going to give a little bit more of an update. But a couple of great things. This is one, which gives us a, really a platform to do some great additions to our police and fire services. But in addition to that, we had, one of their goals was priority dispatch with the terminants from, with Scott, the Scott Emergency Communications Center. Both of those have been accomplished, so this is furthering those activities moving along. So thank you, Alderman Tompkins, for that moment.
Yes, thank you. Item number five is a motion accepting the Matrix Consulting Group's final reports for the police and fire operational study. And I welcome Mallory again for another presentation. Thank you.
Okay, Mallory Mayor, Assistant to the City Administrator. Over the past year, I've had the privilege to work with both police and fire on the police and fire operation study, and I would be remiss to leave out thanks to both of those departments for all of their work on that. I think you'll see as we present kind of the process of this, that they put a tremendous amount of work into that, so I appreciate that. And then also the leadership from the mayor and the city council as we moved through this, this year-long project. As the mayor mentioned, this project really was a byproduct of the Blue Ribbon Panel. So the Blue Ribbon Panel recommended that we retain a consultant to come in and evaluate our police and fire department from top to bottom. The city council directed a release of an RFP, which we did last fall. We received nine responses from that, and then we went through a pretty intensive vetting process of those nine. From there, we selected the Matrix Consulting Group out of California, and we really selected them based on their significant experience with similar-sized communities and projects, and they matched our scope of and they matched our scope of work pretty closely. About this time last year, they started coming on site and interviewing our management teams, our frontline personnel, doing ride-alongs with both police and fire. Departments did a data request, so Matrix gave us a very large request for information, and we ended up submitting over a terabyte of data to them. So that's a lot of data for them to look through. They submitted draft work products to us along the way, and that culminated in final reports, which we shared with you in February. The project, the scope of work, we asked them to review our personnel and our department structures, to review our command, our command structures, also just a general staffing analysis. Do we have the right type of staff doing the right type of work? Look at our call response and how we categorize that and our case management. For fire, we requested a station placement study, so to look at all of our stations that we have and make sure that based on community growth that they're still in the right places, and if not, to recommend a change. To look at our beat boundaries for police and make sure that those are drawn correctly and that they've grown with us over time. And then also to look at our equipment apparatus, technology, and systems, and to recommend any improvements there. So a general overview, I think that scope of work was pretty comprehensive, and we ended up with a truly comprehensive review of our operations in both departments. Of note, it was extremely collaborative. There were lots of opportunities for input along the way from the council, from management, from both departments, from their frontline personnel, and from administration. As I mentioned, the final reports, we shared those with you in February. The consultant was on site and presented pretty in-depth what the key findings and recommendations were. And I think the highlight here from the study, it's really shown the proficiency and the excellence of both of our departments. So the consultant noted best practice areas in both areas that they will take back to other communities that they evaluate. So I think that's something that we can all be certainly proud of. So next steps, the item that's before you tonight is just simply to accept the final report so that we can close out Phase One of the project, which was to complete the study. From there, we will start working on implementation strategies and building out timelines and bring those back to you in blocks for approval where your approval is necessary. We've also incorporated some of their changes as part of the FY 19 budget, which we've discussed throughout the budget process, including the addition of a public safety analyst, which will provide support to both of those departments in analytics, and then also the addition of four police officers through the challenge grant. And lastly, a focus on fire department apparatus replacement, which we discussed as part of the CIP. So again, I think it's been a great project, and I'm happy to wrap this up and move into the implementation stage with the team. Questions?
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Anybody have any questions? Seeing none? Thank you. Does anyone from the public have any questions or comments in regards to this item? And no one else from council? This item will move on. Thank you. Alderman McGinnis, will you please set the agenda?
I move that items one through five be put on the consent agenda.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Same sign? Great. In addition, we have items that are listed on your agenda for informational purposes only, and these are purchases between $10,000 and $50,000. And that is it for finance. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Tompkins and Alderman McGinnis. Are there any other ordinances, resolutions, or motions this evening? Seeing none. We're going to move to our public with business portion. Again, just to note, please identify yourself if you are interested in speaking. This is a section where we do not respond. This is not, this is you're giving us some information. We may take that information and act upon it as we move forward. Since it's not on the agenda, we don't actually interact with any of this. We limit your comments to five minutes, please. And with that, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Please identify yourself, and again, as we talk, it'll be five minutes, please.
I'm Bill Handel. I'm a retired architect, currently living in Nashville, Tennessee. Is that working? All right. Nashville, Tennessee, and grew up in Davenport. One of my first architectural experiences, I recall, was living on Dixwell Street in our story and a half little house and falling head over heels over the steps upstairs. My second one, however, was going to kindergarten at Monroe Elementary School, one of the, really, in retrospect, one of the finest elementary schools probably in the country. At that time, there were, there was, I remember, a goldfish pond in the kindergarten room, upstairs play area, ladders up to it, a fireplace in each of the two kindergartens. Quite a lavish type of thing. And when I went to graduate school at Rice University, although I graduated undergrad at Iowa State, I was quite impressed, even though it had, you know, the knowledge and the love of the Mississippi River, in San Antonio, how, what's really a very small river, actually something really no bigger than Duck Creek, you know, that in 1921, it flooded the downtown area, and it was kind of a U-shaped type of thing, and the city decided, we'll shunt that U off so that we're not in any danger. And they had an architect in town who said, well, why aren't we doing that? Why don't we keep the shunt, but we'll let enough water go in so that we can maybe develop that little stretch, that U-shaped stretch of the river? And he stayed with them and worked for the next 15 years on the San Antonio Riverwalk, which probably has, in all of those years, generated millions, hundreds of millions, maybe billions of dollars in those last 80 years of tourism and growth in the city of San Antonio. And so that time when I was at Rice, I said, hmm, I wonder if there'll ever be a chance that I can, in some small way, have the kind of impact to my city that I love and grew up in as that architect did. So four years ago, the Hargraves had their river vision proposal, and I was quite impressed by Mayor Glupa's commitment to have our riverfront be world-class. At that time, I said, isn't that maybe shooting a little too high? I mean, it is Davenport, Iowa. We're not in the top even 100 cities in the country, but I'll go with them. And I looked at their proposal, and I so much wanted to like it. This is the upgrade. When I looked at it, because I had just come from a visit in Chattanooga, checking out their riverfront and all the sculptures that they have there, when I looked at the Hargrave proposal, my initial reaction is, I don't see Davenport here. I don't see what your riverfront is like when you don't have to have a flood wall. Because in a city that has a flood wall, like you know in Rock Island, you walk on a concrete surface, and you see a guardrail in front of you, and you look over it and you look down, and there's the river. If you don't have a flood wall, you have the opportunity of actually walking down to the river, like we currently do in just that very small boat ramp that we have at the end of Main Street. And I was kind of, and I know it's because of focus groups and that, because people think that that seawall maybe has been there forever, and there was a reason for it, but it was really just put in in the 50s so we'd have a nice horizontal surface for our parking lot. Originally, from Maine all the way to Perry, there was the angled brick landing. Main Street Landing is a wonderful name, but there's no reality there right now. There is Main Street, but there's no landing. There's a boat ramp so that you can launch a small outboard. Ladies and gentlemen, this is Davenport's steamboat landing. With four steamboats right next to each other, and we weren't alone. Lots of cities had that. Anyway, this is a sneak preview of what I'm proposing right here at the end of our skybridge. I'll have more in upcoming meetings, maybe at the Levy Improvement Commission. I can't make the one next week, but it looks like we're not going to be doing anything right off the bat on the end of the skybridge, but I'd sure like to look at that and give my input on it. And again, mayor, you're, and city, I so appreciated that meeting last night with RDG. That gave me just, you can't imagine the amount of hope that that gave me, because they are such quality firm. And the city would, and the Figgy and the downtown partnership would do that, I thought was just outstanding. And, and, oh, and mayor, when you have your Mississippi River Mayor's Conference in September, maybe we'll be able to, you know, have, this is a place to maybe do the start, but maybe we'll have a better idea of how our skybridge can be developed. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public who would like to speak? Seeing no one else. Are there any other reports of city officials this evening? Is there a motion to adjourn? A motion in a second? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Same sign. Meeting adjourned.